Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the Republic through which stands the nation, under God, indivisible, Beauty and Justice for all. First item on the agenda, a moment of silence. Please join me as we remember Linda Randall, a graduate of the district, and Stanley, oh, boy, Strony, perhaps, S.T.R.O.J.N.Y., who's a retiree of the district. Thank you. Presentations.
We completed our vision, described the place we wanted to be. Had to connect them to the four bullets on our vision. And our math and ELA. So this is a step-by-step guided process.
We have a line, eight members. Collaboration and collective responsibility.
That we created a... We also have completed... Dr. Ryder. Opportunity on a half-day for whole staff. Also going to take a... By exactly their absence and... Measure the progress for this goal, we're... Data that we're using is not kind of measurement.
Comments, questions? Who's first?
Just have one quick question. Thank you. Mentioned the specials, the DLCs are gonna look at work maybe three more times this year. Do they, as a group themselves, or...
Times they mix, but music department.
One question. Something we've seen with a lot of these other presentations is the positivity project. Are you guys doing anything yet?
About this time, when you looked at it last...
All right. And just to follow up, are you guys doing any sort of rebranding, like getting your students involved in redoing your school logo? I know the North Syracuse Early Education Program just went through all that, and they're really kind of bringing themselves back out there. So are you guys gonna try to integrate any sort of project with your students?
Wondering about the links. Conversations to go, but certainly...
Awesome. Great.
Dave? Hi. Okay, I have just some comments and questions. First of all, good job on the presentation. For your first goal, you're measuring progress. I just want to commend you for your results that you're seeing. Math and your ELA are meeting or exceeding the state's standards, and that's fantastic. And how did you go about achieving that?
Yeah. Nationally normed.
Great. Sounds like it. Then also your Pi night. What kinds of things do you... What are your topics? It was a great turnout. And can you also explain your climate walk, how you gathered data? What is that really? And who all participates in that? Thank you.
So I just want to say, nice job with your presentation, and you clearly, I think we're very clear on what your goals are, and I think we got a real feel for the culture of the building. I want to add about the climate walks. This is something that we're doing in every building, every building planning team, and different ones are at different points. So I'm happy to see that you're one of the ones that's kind of ahead of the game and have already completed it. And I do think that it will provide valuable information about the climate and culture in the future for you to even take further. I want to also comment on the fact that you're acknowledging the importance of attendance and trying to analyze what the issues are, the underlying issues behind attendance, because I do think that that is kind of a root cause of something that we need to look at, because if they're not here, we can't do anything to make a difference. Nice job with that, and certainly a nice job for involving the community.
Now we have an update on the KWS Bear Road Elementary School construction project. Get as close to that mic as you can, too, so that the camera can pick it up, guys. Thank you.
Last time we were here was back in December where we... You bid last Friday. December, we were kind of alluding to the fact that there's a lot of volatility in... And in order to adjust the budget for this project, building, how the... How we've done it for years.
Yeah?
Received three bids.
Yeah? And if we look at the 28 million, you really need to add another five to that for the incidental side. So we're really, you're at 33, 33 and a half million where we really are. Pardon me? Oh, yeah. Yeah. It's about, yeah. And again, when you look at $410 a square foot, that is beyond anything anybody's ever seen for this kind of work, yeah. But it is the market condition. So we did have some conversations Friday after all this happened. What we were looking at, and looking to you folks tonight, say we need to call timeout here. Can't go back to the public, and we're not gonna get any more aid on that building, no matter how much more we spend. We have hit the cost allowance. But perhaps we call time. That's it. There's no more aid, no more... We can spend all we want. There's no more aid on that. So...
See the back. Everybody was...
Yeah. Yeah.
Elementary school, don't you think? Which is why we took it.
Mm-hmm.
Actually, the HVAC plumbing and electrical... And we're in alignment.
Again, what we talked about, and again, if we, boy wants to, is to ask King and King and Watchdog to go back and look at the building from what are the essential work that needs to be done in the building, structurally and mechanically, and, you know, the outside walls, the roofs, the windows, the floors, and not redesign the interior, but come back and tell us what that would be, with the belief that's probably gonna be more than $20.8 million. So that three weeks from tonight, at our next meeting, Board of Education could enter into contractual agreements, because this is a whole new, beginning of a whole new project, in effect, enter in agreements with King and King and Watchdog for this redesign, and then have them come back in three weeks and tell us what their plan is in terms of time and scope, and what that, you know, preliminarily, what's that gonna look like, and when would you be able to come back with? This is what we're proposing to do, and this is what it will cost. That meets the... I know there's questions here, but if that meets the general idea of tonight, we'll ask them to forward their proposals, so we can see them ahead of time as to the fee structure for them, but come back in three weeks and tell us, you know, with a list, sort of, of what are the things you need to do to that building to, because it needs work. The walls are bad, the roof's bad, everything's bad over there. And it needs this front entrance, if we're not gonna move it, would need to be redone for security purposes. No real good options here, I guess. It's a shame. It's just very much a shame, but we're caught in just a very bad... But you want to tell us how long... If Don's first question was, why did we just wait until we bid again? And your answer was what?
Have a spot to try and take some of these things down.
So questions, comments? It's not a pretty picture, but we need to cope with it.
I just feel really bad spending all this kind of money to just kind of put a facelift on the building rather than do... We're gonna be back in the same spot in another 10 years.
Yeah, well, and this is the difficult...
Don, Dan, and I went over and met with the Bear Road staff. We let them know what was gonna be tonight with the board. Of course, they're extremely disappointed, but, you know, I think that they were disappointed, but they didn't understand what the situation was, and said that there were a lot more questions than there were answers right now, and that we would, you know, keep them informed as things unfolded.
How far outreach worthy bid is this in New York? Is this a reach-out to Pennsylvania thing? Are companies who may need the work?
Most presentation in the world, the Association General.
Also, an indicator that maybe in a month that that, we could be hitting session, because we're at a peak right now. I know you said we...
I wish we had a crystal ball with that.
Take a pretty dramatic look.
Yes.
President choose to recap, in three weeks are going to take a look at what is needed to...
Yeah.
Say those roof, walls.
Items that Cook mentioned, the structure, the mechanicals, yeah, just make up the list. No, no, no.
Not design it, but...
Come back with a list.
We'll come up with a game plan and what we think based on...
Right.
So, if we do this, when's the next time we would look at Bear Road to actually give them the reconfiguration they need?
That's what they're, in three weeks.
No, 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 no. I mean, I mean, if we, if we scale it down, because, I mean, this is a disservice to the staff and students, it's not your fault, but, you know, it's...
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, at what point in the future are we going to, because we're going to have to hit other buildings after we do this one. So, they're going to be stuck in the same configuration for, what, another 15, 20 years? In my opinion, I would rather wait, personally, because you're going to get a shot down the line to actually do a proper renovation than have to wait another three. But that's just, that's just me.
But the issue of, I'm sorry, yeah, the issue of waiting, yeah, those outside walls, how bad.
The staff even brought up today, I mean, there's certain things like heating, and I mean, there's certain, there's certain things that may still need to be addressed, so I'm assuming those are the kinds of things you're going to come back and talk about.
It's the same kind of work that we did out at Lake Shore with the new walls, new roof.
We haven't done Lake Shore.
No, I know, but what, last time you guys, we did a renovation out there, we gave them new windows.
Sisroel back in '94 was, I think, the kind of renovation that maybe you're looking at now. We didn't really reconfigure spaces, it was just new windows, heating system, new flooring, a remodel, not a complete renovation.
Choosing which projects, um, the decision.
So, you'll get proposals to us, through Connie, that we can see, and then at the next meeting, you'll come back with your, I guess, plan for what you're going to do going forward. At that meeting, we can vote to enter into the agreements with you, and away we go, and hope that the numbers look a lot better than this. It is disappointing, like, we all agree, but I guess we have to take that half a loaf better than none kind of concept.
Does doing the project in phases affect the price on this one?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
So, I mean, if we were to, if we were to look at trying to vacate the whole building at once, somehow figuring that out.
We did, we did.
We did that at the very beginning of the...
I, I know, I mean, would it be worth...
No place to go.
Trying to look at that again? I, I don't know. I don't know how much it would drop the cost of the project.
Not enough to offset the cost of...
Right now, we're unaware, because we're looking at...
No, they're expensive to retrofit.
Yeah, it's a great point at which you're, you're throwing...
I just want to add one other thing, because we know how rumors tend to spread, and I want to make sure, the question was asked today, if this means that the district would be looking to phase out the use of Bear Road. In other words, if we can't renovate it, we're not, we're going to close the building, and the answer to that is no, because we don't have space to absorb the students. So, you know, I just want people to understand, that's not an option here.
Anything else? Thank you, gentlemen, we'll see you in three weeks. Thank you very much. Okay, next item, comments from the audience. There's no one that has signed up. So, we'll go to item four, Board of Education Committee Reports and Comments. Anything from anybody, Paul or Mary or...
I, I do not have a new report from Legislative Committee since last week, I just wanted to let the board know that Capitol Conference Saturday, Sunday, and Monday in Albany, opportunity to, I'd be the same people, many of them.
On Saturday?
Well, you know how it goes.
Yeah, please do. Anything, Mary? No, okay. Mike?
I just have a comment. Last Tuesday, I was able to go to the kickoff open house for the new Lockheed Martin CTE program that Bosse is putting on. It was really well attended. Half of the students that were there in attendance were from our district. So, I really need to thank Mike Leone for his drive in doing this. I know when he was on the board here, he was really trying to push it. I'm glad that we're able to, that he was able to get Lockheed involved and push this project forward. For those of you that don't know, this program is half a day, every day for a year. These students will go into Lockheed, they'll get their government clearance, they'll be able to get a fast track to OCC and either RIT or Clarkson for engineering. They'll be able to get a summer internship paid job with Lockheed, and after they graduate college, have the leg up to actually work in the plant here full-time. So, really a strong interest in our students, so it was really good to see that. So, just thanks to Mike Leone, Colleen, and all of her CTE team over there.
Mike?
Okay, I just have a bit of good news. The 2019 Science Olympiad Regional Competition. On Saturday, January 26th, CNS Science Olympiad teams competed in the regional Science Olympiad competition held at Lemoine College. Out of a total of 39 teams competing, CNS Team Green finished fourth, and Team Blue finished ninth. The teams competed in 26 events, which covered topics related to earth science, biology, chemistry, physics, and technology, and I have to say, I'm not going to read the names of what their projects were, because some of them I can't even pronounce, let alone really understand what it is about. The teams medaled in 20 of 26 events, and I have a lengthy list of a number of students that were winners. Based on the team's performance at the regional competition, they earned the opportunity to compete in the state-level competition to be held on March 15th and 16th at Lemoine College, so we wish them luck.
Thank you. Routine action items, 5A, consideration of classification and school placement of disabled students certified by the District Committee on Special Education. B, consideration of classification and placement of preschool disabled students certified by the District Committee on Preschool Special Education. And C, consideration of classification and placement of students in home instruction programs, as recommended by the Home Instruction Review Committee. I will entertain a motion to approve 5A, B, and C as a group. Okay, well, we'll go with Aaron and then, yes, Terry. My mind is going blank all of a sudden. All in favor? I've lost it. 6A, Anadagro-Cortland-Madison-Bosse, board member nomination. You've had the packet in front of you. We have received a letter from Mr. Crabtree, expressing interest once again in assuming that seat. So, I would ask for a motion to nominate Bob Crabtree to run for that seat on the Board of Education. Mr. Maurizio, Ms. Scanlon, all in favor. There we go. Congratulations, sir, I think. Yeah, yeah. Thanks for, and Bob has provided us with a overview of Bosse's annual report and list of programs and pictures of everything that our kids are doing over there, so thank you very much, and we appreciate your service over there, Bob. Thank you so much. Two plus of non-marketable equipment. A belt sander. Wow. Get a lot of money for that? No. Doesn't work great. And then, C, North Syracuse-Purdian Professional Association Contract Agreement. So, a motion to approve 6B and C together, Mr. Denofio, Mr. Thor, all in favor. Retirements. Oh, my goodness, yes. Lisa Boe, elementary teacher, 25 years. Julie Campanello, teaching assistant, 29 and a half. Stephen Carey, social studies teacher, 28. Tammy Harris, elementary teacher, 32. Linda Harvey, elementary teacher, 32 and a half. Mary Catherine Mahar, health teacher, 30. Susan, help me out, Maniachi? Maniachi, thank you. Elementary teacher, 20. Lorraine O'Brien, elementary teacher, 32. Deborah Parker, reading teacher, 20. Karen Patterson, music teacher, 28. Ursula Pratt, library media specialist, 23. Maria Scuffino, special ed teacher, 33. Melanie Slavitt, special ed teacher, 22. Keith Thrasher, teaching assistant, 23. Jody Whitney, kindergarten teacher, 28. Ann Wright, elementary teacher, 28. And a guy I told he couldn't retire, but apparently he's going to, John Ward. Director of Facilities, 19 and a half, and my trustee, whoops, 433.7 years of service at one time, so wow. We wish all of these people all the best in a long and happy and healthy retirement. 7A, instructional personnel report. 7B, support staff personnel report. And a motion to approve both of those together? Mr. Farfaria and Mr. Denofio, all in favor. Okay, we will go for a motion for executive session. Here someplace. Motion to move into executive session for the purpose of receiving an update on negotiations with the North Syracuse Education Association, the Directors Bargaining Unit, Middle Managers Bargaining Unit, and the Principals Bargaining Unit, and to receive an update on three legal matters relative to potential litigation with no action to follow. Who will make that motion? Mr. Harrington, Ms. Kruger, all in favor. Off to executive session at 7:40.